I'd like to call it a order, the regular meeting of the Vienna Utility Board for December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Let the record reflect that I've taken role with all members of the Utility Board with the exception of Mr. Thorpe, who are present today, having a forum. We will proceed. The minutes from the November the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections? No objections in the minutes will be approved as posted. So we move on to unfinished business today, the water quality testing. Water quality results are still great.
Yeah.
And we're, and you know, we submitted our, our results to the attorney that's for the West Virginia Water Quality Association. And he reviewed them and sent back and said that you guys are so lucky because your water results are better than most cities in the country. Which is, I mean, for water quality, that's, that's excellent. So anyway, and then that was Paul Calamita, by the way. Have that good of water, I think we're very, very blessed. Last meeting, are there any questions about the water quality? Last meeting, Kim asked a question about the ARP money. I thought the money had already been obligated, but it has not. We have one point one eight million dollars left in ARP funds. And so that one point one eight million dollars, we actually have to spend that money before the end of two thousand twenty-four. We have to allocate it by two thousand twenty-four. It has to be spent by two thousand twenty-six. So there's a million dollars there. And you know, there's way more projects that need to be done. There's some interesting things that are going along with City Council. So I have no idea. I know later on this afternoon Craig's gonna make a presentation about the meters. And honestly, our back is kind of up against the wall. So we'll have some decisions to make about making a recommendation to council about asking for those funds or part of those funds or whatever. But at any rate, there's one point one eight million dollars of unallocated funds left in that account.
So just to clarify, I did not ask you that last time, Mayor. You said that there was no ARPA money left, which I didn't sound right. And so I didn't challenge, I just waited and I emailed Amy about it. And she actually said, unencumbered, there's one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. It's not, you know, encumbered in any way. I really, and I've said this a million times, we need to use it here for infrastructure because what ends up happening, and we take this, a portion of it or all of it, City Council takes it for whatever new trinket they want to do. Then this puts more pressure on the ratepayers. Because every time we take money away from water and sewer, and we know we're gonna be looking at a rate increase. So I would like to see us use it here and considering the, the twelve thirty-one twenty-four deadline, we need to figure out what we want to do and be proactive and send something to council to grab this money because it'll disappear quicker than you think. And I have a question about what we discussed last time. And I know you weren't here because you were recovering from your surgery. But we went over the things that we were gonna move forward with regarding Michael Griffith and, you know, and my notes, I have it as wastewater improvements, phase one and two, move forward everything except for the main trunk line because we're waiting on earmarks from Manchin. I understand that. But the trunk line portion was a little over two million. But so, but we are not moving forward with the rest of it, like, you know, up twelfth street and across the avenue. I guess I need more clarification for that. But my, my first question is, what can we use that one point one, two million dollars that's left in ARPA here? So that we can move forward, get something to council?
Well, hopefully in about ten minutes you'll approve that.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the skating system is also.
That's, I originally thought that, and pay for it. But there's a project, I know Randy and I met with the first light boy and the state individual out on Twelfth Street today. Bridge replacement rehab project and timeframe that'll happen. And hopefully we get that sewer line upgrade that goes up Twelfth Street at the same time. That should be in the rate. So they're talking about a year, maybe two years, that bridge. So it all depends what they want to do, rehab or replace. There's a lot of projects we can spend money on. There's a dire project we need to work on right now, which I'll discuss in the business. Yeah, I, I think it's, it should, I would like for it to come to Utility Board and appropriate what projects we need to be done with that.
Well, if we don't ask for it, it's not gonna magically come here because, you know, there's eyes on other prizes, I'll put it that way.
So do we ask, I mean, do we? We're kind of backwards, but I mean, do we go ahead and ask the council for that money? Approval through this board and say you can do it from council or APRP, APRP discussion?
We allocate every project.
And now that it's over, it can be spent for anything.
So we don't have to ask for it?
Yeah. You can't, I mean, it takes a council decision of where to spend that money. But I mean, it can be spent on any project, there's no guidelines.
Can you clarify that, please? Because there were conditions on ARPA, so if that's changed, I don't think anybody knows that.
So I'm not gonna answer that question. You wanna know, we'll ask Amy so that you get a correct answer.
Well, that's probably the best thing to do then.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
The, it's considered reimbursement for expenses that we had during COVID. Because of that, it's pretty much the guidelines are very liberal. Okay, obviously, you can spend it for anything, infrastructure. But other than that, it's, but we'll ask Amy to for the exact stuff.
So like I said, it's under new business, the meter discussion. I'm not sure how it works, maybe you just explain, I didn't understand it. So under unfinished business can, do you have to have approval from this board to ask council? Or we just, we can just ask council, you can just do it?
I don't have to ask, I don't have to have anything because I have dual positions, okay? However, if the board votes to ask council for an allocation from the ARP funds, then that obviously would be better because the board is asking for it.
Can we do that now or?
If it's on the agenda, we'll have to do, we get the agenda, which is where?
It's on the unfinished business.
I know that, it's where?
Item B, unfinished business. I guess, that's why I'm asking. Yeah. Unfinished business, item B.
Well, that will be the time to, if you wanna do it under that, then that's where we're here, what do you wanna talk about?
I would like to ask council to appropriate one point one million, eight something million dollars to Utility Board for projects that we are trying to complete.
Okay.
That would create the money for the meter project and any additional money we could apply to our future projects in the water and sewer.
Okay. So Craig is asking that we make a quest, that that money be allocated to the Utility Board for future projects, including the meters. Okay? And so.
Second?
I didn't make a motion.
Okay, well, if you need a motion to be made, I'm happy to make that motion. I move that, sorry. Okay, so I move that the remaining funds, the remaining ARPA funds are allocated to Vienna Utility Board to be used for ongoing projects, including the meters.
Second. Okay, so move to second, then we ask council for the meter project and the remaining balance to be transferred to the, or allocated to the Utility Board for future projects. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll, I'll question, who is in favor of asking council to allocate that money to Utility Board? Please signify by raising your right hand. Both, so it's unanimous, okay?
Thank you, I didn't have to present it, so that's why I was asking.
Well, it won't be, it won't be on the agenda.
Oh, I see.
A little while.
January, right?
One month.
I think that's a good, good thing, so. Help us out, I've been quite a bit, so.
You'll have to ask Mike to make you another presentation so that when you come, that you can talk about the meters and show all that, you know?
That makes big bucks for him. Maybe I'll even let him get this time presented. He won't do it.
See, I have a side ear.
Okay. Kind of goes right into five-year plan, right? I mean, is that how it works or?
You know what? You got the agenda in front of you, big boy. You cheated us, didn't come last week, you run the doggone, go right ahead. Okay? Go ahead.
Well, I'm your plan, I guess, we'll, I mean, we're still work on that, correct?
Always.
Yeah, so it's, I don't think there's any change. You guys have any changes, one done?
The comprehensive plan is done. And so the intent is to include the five-year plan and the emergency plan with that document. And so the five-year plan as it's presented now will be included in it. Obviously, it can be updated, added to, whatever, as we go on. But the comprehensive plan is done and there will be a hearing, a public hearing on January the twenty-second at five-thirty with the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission will, at that time, listen to whatever comments the public has to. And then the Planning Commission will vote on the comprehensive plan. And then it will be forwarded to council at the next meeting, whatever that date will be, sometime in February. And then council will vote on it. When it passes, it will be adopted and it will transfer it down to the county and get it distributed out. That's, unfortunately, that's a document that we're behind on, but it wasn't really our fault. We engaged WVU to do it for us. Covid hit, nobody could go anywhere, it got delayed terribly, but it's done now. And it's a good document. It's, it's not a hundred percent by any means, but it is a good document. And it will be a good foundation for whatever. So that's the plan with that. Five-year plan, our five-year plan needs to stay on forever, basically. And Mike just slide the timeline forward, get him knocked off. Okay?
And I can help with that one, since, you know, the Plan Commission, so.
Are your terms up? You won't be renouncing?
That's fine, too.
Unfortunately, you have one of those lifetime appointments.
If I, I think I can handle the pay cut.
Yeah. I have a question about that. So on January twenty-third, the Planning Commission, we're gonna, there's a public hearing?
At five-thirty.
At five-thirty. So is there a time limit on that? How does that work? Because I know we don't. The same rules apply? Okay.
I guess the twenty-second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. I wrote it as a twenty-second at five-thirty, which is a Monday, so.
And I, and, and honestly, Kim, you're asking the wrong person, I'm not sure.
Well, there's not a chairman, I'm in commission right now.
I think we voted on it that night.
You did, but you won't vote on it until after the public hearings ever, so. I'm assuming Jim will still run the public hearings, but at any rate, it's the public hearings, was my mind.
And the same thing with council, when it's presented to council, there'll be a public hearing as well.
Correct. Yeah, they'll both be noticed in the paper. And that's my state code, so. All right. Go keep going. You're doing great.
Twelfth Street Le station improvements, we're completed that project, I tell you, the pumps are working great. You really don't know how bad the old ones were until you get the new ones in and see how well they're working. Super excited about the non-clog issues that we've had. I had some pictures, I didn't print them off, but the other pumps and impellers were absolutely wore out, had holes in them. Guys had, replaced some pumps, even how they's even working. They were still, half of them were plugged up and we've been pulling them once a month, clean them out, and they still plug, so. The new pumps are and they're, they're great, pipe twice as much what the old ones did, so. Rotation where we used to have to run like one or two, two pumps run, me and Gals, now we're on one. Rotation's great, super quiet. You can actually go down in the pit and talk now, or before you just hear vibrations and noise. Doesn't seem like the air relief valves work as hard also, now, so. I think it was a win-win situation upgrading them pumps, so. We saved the old pumps. And outside, we disposed of the old fittings and metal structures, but we do still have the old pumps. We're gonna put it on govdeals.com, see if anybody's interested in them. I think we should amend the bid on that because they are worth some scrap money there because of the popper lines and stuff, so. We'll run through that and don't get the bid, we'll scrap the product out. It's a three pump, I think the motors are great, the impellers and the old pumping mechanism itself is shot. Motors are still okay. Maybe somebody needs them.
Do we have a fourth motor?
We do not.
But do we have a fourth motor now?
We do not.
Because we have the ability, ability to get those rebuilt in the state of West Virginia, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I went down with Craig and we looked at the old motors. The bottom of the motors were the housing, were. I mean, I don't think you can get a stuffed another piece of cotton or debris or whatever it is. I mean, you'd have to chip that stuff out of there to get it out of there. And so, I mean, there, there is no way those things could be, could have been working efficient, no way. And so I don't know that there's any value, but if one of the neighboring cities or someone, well, those are hundred horsepower motors, aren't they?
Was, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're big motors. And so those things are very expensive and if someone could go on and buy those as a spare, but because of the way the bolt patterns and what have you on the mounts are, there's a good chance they're not gonna be worth anything but scrap value.
Yeah.
And so at some point on that motor, there should be an identifying plate. We need a picture of that identifying plate. And then we'll put it in with the rest of it, and if we, if we can get rid of them fine, if not, we'll scrap them for the copper value, you know? I don't know what those things weigh, but you couldn't pick one of them up?
No, you had to, we had you to be equipped with a backhoe, skid steers, so. So it's not, and I asked Mike and when new pumps get us, get us some information about maintenance report. It's like that, I have to give my sewer plant operator to make sure it's proper job, so. He's still letting me do it, I'm just.
You have a question? What's that?
Nah, I think we're done with that now, right? Yeah, and if you, any of you want to get rid of that, you can.
Okay, so I don't, we can take that one off.
Now, Mike, you wanna update us on the water and wastewater system improvement projects?
Yeah, after the last meeting, we did send in the information to Michael, checked with him a week after I sent it, and he has it, and Dixie was working on it. I didn't get a timeline from him on when that would get done, but I know Greg had mentioned, you know, making sure that we have any raises or anything, you know, not just the capital costs, so. That's one of the things we need to check in with him to make sure he's got those numbers, too.
And, but that would also be if they rates for guys, plus equipment, what we need next five or a couple years, so. Make sure it includes that in these rate structures. I don't believe he, I know I did not speak to him last time, the rate structure, so. Asking to do it this time, it should be part of rate increase.
So I have a question, so how does that work? I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to a rate, an increase for salary increases, but what kind of number did you use to plug in?
Well, yeah, I haven't talked to him, so. Why is on the proposed, what rate structures, we got longevity raise thirty-five cents per hour per man per year. Plus a rate increase that we discussed earlier in here.
Well, because that's my question, because we talked about several different numbers and.
Well, the rate increase structure, I mean, we, I asked for six, three dollars an hour, whatever, police department got, three eighty-eighty an hour, whatever you want to put in there, but also two eighty-eight. Also, need to look about separation between our classifications. Right now, between your getting individual S-one to the S-six, and formans, I had two dollars difference an hour. So I need to separate that out to, between S-one to S-six, it should be five, six dollars an hour. That's the issue we're having is the employees that do come home. They're looking at, saying, do I want more responsibility for fifty-six more an hour? Absolutely not. Why would I want to be a foreman and, you know, get my neck on line for two dollars an hour? So they're not gonna do it. Get that pay separation in there, make it more valuable to them, they get their CDLs or press up to our system that we need to. I mean, they're between an S-one, gain individual and main operators, a dollar and a quarter, so. So that's not worth it to need to angle the carrot out, make them guys want us in our system.
I appreciate the fact that you're trying to grow everybody that's in the department. I mean, obviously, the more skills people have, the more valuable they are to the city. And, and I totally agree with what you're saying about the differential of, you know, somebody who's gonna be a leader versus somebody who's, you know, not very much. And then that's the same problem in the police department, too, by the way. But I guess, I, I'm trying to wrap my mind around what you're saying because at no point have we ever talked about, at least I can remember. I frequently forget stuff, but that we ever talked about rolling in wages into the rate increase.
Well, it should, I mean, it's every time you got a rate structure, rate increase, you have to can't raise rates, well, it's difficult to raise rates without having structure, rate structure to cover it, so. In the past, when we've done rate increases, we've always discussed about pay rate structure. So that's incorporated into that rates, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to, when we talk about rate structures, it's gonna be a step program. It's gonna be this one year, next year's gonna be more, third year's gonna be more, fourth year's gonna be more, that kind of stuff. So that has to incorporate rate structures with the guys, pay rates.
Okay.
I've asked in the past, this past time, we did a rate study, he didn't call and ask me that, and I didn't even get a call reference to equipment we're gonna need in the next four years, class rate structures, I'm not sure what went on, so. I know he talked to Amy, they, or Dixie talked to Amy, but I never did get a call. Really disappointed with him, so. Amy does a great job, don't get me wrong, but yet she doesn't understand why I'm gonna need this department in the next four years or five years, so. She knows about the projects, but she doesn't know about the equipment or rate structure for the manpower.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think we're all frustrated because we did this over, you know, a year ago, and then we can't use those numbers, and then we're back at it again, and we're not really firmed up on what we're doing, which comes back to my question that I asked a little bit ago. Does, can somebody please explain to me what we're doing on the sewer project that we're sending into for the rate study, for the rate increase? What parts we're doing?
Twelfth Street line upgrade.
Well, on, I, we were waiting on earmarks for the trunk line. And I know the trunk line, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm gonna say it's around three million dollars. But there was more to happen at Twelfth Street, you know, and all the way up to the Cross Avenue, which can't remember the Cross Avenue at this point, but with the, those lateral lines that we put in. So I'm not really clear what got sent for the rate increase and what's not been sent.
Yeah, I sent in everything for them, so I just did the phase one, phase two as presented.
Okay, so hang on a second. Okay, so phase one is the Forest Main to Parkersburg, Eleventh Avenue, Twelfth Street. You sent that one in, right?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
So I have on hold earmarks, okay, that's but then I have I have it as on hold, too. So, but you're saying all of phase one went, got submitted?
Correct.
So that includes the forest law, everything?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, that's my misunderstanding, because that's basically a seven million dollar project because I had it as being on hold because of earmarks. That's not the case, we're sending that seven million dollar project in?
Correct, I mean, he will calculate it and then, you know, if or when we get the money, then, you know, we'll just, you know, it will help out with that number then.
Okay, so, yeah, if we get the money, great, it'll help, help out, it'd be wonderful. Okay, I appreciate you clarifying for that because I, I really had in my mind that it was, got somehow divided up, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did, we did both phases of it, too. Replacements is the first phase and the second phase were the clean loops around.
Which is, we'll talk about letting copper survey when it happens, too. Everything's all tied together on that because of that water project, basing its elimination, which worked out, which goes right in with the copper. Start work. Discuss. There's a pond run dry dams, I mean, we're just here, project is there, we're just here waiting for some type of funding for that project. Randy and I did meet with the state road today, reached the bridge at Twelfth Street. We'll discuss about rehabilitation of that bridge or replacing that bridge. And, and I both encouraged them with the project that's going on on that sewer line upgrade, which runs underneath that bridge, about twenty foot deep. Increased size of patch of that, plus dredging upon run and that being a flood control structure. We felt the existing bridge, not for rehab, but actually replays, because what it does, pond runs out here. Say out here, out here, okay? And, yeah, yeah. And the bridge is here, so it's really tightening that water down and shooting through the bridge. If we put a new structure in, we can install the new sewer line at that time. Plus, it'd widen that channel out on pond run. Stanchion, so. Hopefully Randy's gonna call, contact state and hopefully they'll see what we feel is best and improve that. And I'll receive some walking trail and a bike trail goes right there, too. And lowering that bridge, right now it's an elevated bridge, it's got a real drop off. You can lower that bridge down and make it wider, bigger flow channel. It would help with the eyesight visibility of any kind of walkers or pedestrians. It would help with the eyesight visibility of any kind of walkers or pedestrians that cross the bridge. Right now, you come up that bridge, you can't see your top of it.
God was watching.
Yeah, it's dangerous for walkers. It, it's, replacement bridges, win-win all the way around, so. And it has to do with dredging, so. Back to dredging, hopefully we'll get the grant money or the money of that project, we can get that completed.
Four, four beautiful ducks right there below that bridge.
It was, it was pretty wonderful.
Man, yeah, pretty.
Yeah. He said cat eyeball on him.
I did not.
Yeah, he was like, yeah.
You're not doing.
Yeah, he was, he was waiting, so. Hours, and he may as, I said, so.
Question about the pond run dredging. You said we're looking for a funding. I know it was discussed before that we're, that there's an earmark for that, but I know we have to wait on Congress to do what they're going to do, and maybe they'll never do it. But if we went ahead and did that project, could we use, if we got some earmark money, can we use it somewhere else? I know there's no shortage of things that we can use it on, but...
No.
No.
Earmarks are earmarks, they're specific projects.
Okay. So, because that was announced in the paper, that's how I found out about it.
On run.
Pond run being selected as the, an earmark.
Yeah. That's good. I didn't see that, but that's, that's great. Just, I'll just write the check, we'll get started on. Let's get my money in hand. Ready to get it, right, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll look it up, I'll get the article. That's how I found out about it. I found out about everything, read the paper.
I mean, that'd be nice, get a check. I don't know when, going to issue them out. I mean, they, how much was that check? Or how much would it be for?
We turned the project in.
Great. That needs to be done.
We've been very fortunate that flooding has not been bad. In the past, it has been, but recently, it's been good.
Yes.
Okay, so sooner we get that done, long range wise, better we'll be.
Yeah, we've been blessed the last couple of years.
Yeah.
It's rain and snow and everything, so bad weather. Really pushing our luck on things, so. Haven't had a deratio or disaster for a while, so. We're due.
Hey, it made you famous, what else do you want?
It made me famous.
You're just trying to get me to enter here.
Greg Metz left in the back of his suburban for three days.
He just wants a bigger generator.
Had his finger in the diet.
Made me old, didn't make me famous. Yeah. I don't want to do that anymore, so. Done with that, so. So, any more questions? dredging pond run dry dams. We'll say we had a meeting, suppose we had a meeting last week to do inspections on the dry dam structures at Dunna, and sent Bill out to meet them, and they never showed up, so. It was a kind of a bad weather day, never showed up. So he waited for an hour out there. Hopefully they'll reschedule. We'll go out with them, see. Talking about the dry dam at Dunna and Pond Run. Mike, 28th Street Storm Range Project Improvements.
Yeah, we still plan, next month, they should have out for the next Clean Water SRF, which we will apply for, for that. So I can give you an update once that goes in, where, where that stands.
I have a question. Lots of questions today, but this one, on the 20th, 20th Street Storm Improvement Project. I was at the park board meeting a couple of days ago, and they were talking about that little field across from the community building that used to be years ago, back when I was a kid, we, we played ball on those fields. And they would like to utilize those fields in the future for T-ball, and they've got to make some adjustments, whatever. But the question is, they thought that maybe that retention that's going to be put in that area is underneath those fields, and I didn't think that was the case. I thought it was a little bit further up, kind of behind those storage buildings. And so, nothing they, nothing we do or they do or whatever, it's not going to interfere with anything, shouldn't be any concerns?
There, there should be a little grading, because the pipe does go underneath that area. It's, you know how it drops off right there? We may, you know, level that out a little bit more, just to get cover on the pipe, but we shouldn't.
Okay, yeah, that's great, thank you.
Craig, you're pretty good on Clean Water. I'd like you to go in and look behind the storage buildings, okay? The lady that lived on the top of the hill just recently passed away. She called me and she said, I don't care what you do, as long as you don't take all the trees out. See if she owned that property all the way to 15th Avenue?
Yes.
And see if that's hers. If, if it was hers, we might try to acquire that, that piece right there. We can put that retention system in before we get to those storage units, because it's just flat. There's nothing there at all.
Actually, the retention, part of the main retention system's in the road. And we've increased the size of pipe, say twenty-four inch to forty-eight inch, and that's part of retention. Bound by the ball field, this is additional retention system before it slows water down, before it gets in the pond. That area you're referring to is kind of limited out, because most of the water, or is, currently goes down through them woody section. It's actually all go down the street.
Oh, I know, we've had inch, you know, problems in the past where the corner of that building was cracked and falling in, and, and it was so much debris in there, it would block that.
Yeah, we clean that once a week. Yeah, that, that storm drain, that's where the current storm drain runs, see there, and that'll, won't be run.
Okay.
So any water you, we were getting off that areas, what's in that woody section or in the backyards, natural drainage, it won't be this low like it used to.
Take a look at that anyway, if you can, let me know.
And I think she said that, so, last time I looked, I went up to that house, that was part of the problem.
I, well, I'd like to know, somebody let me know, that'd be great.
So, big one, lead service line inventory update. We've been working on last couple of months. Pretty hard on that project. We have incorporated all the data that we know into our service, into our inventory. Mike's helping with it. We've, Joe's been doing GIS, Tommy's been doing some Autocad work. We've incorporated all the bill information since after nineteen eighty-seven. All the meter updates we did, what, anything we found on the field, did a meter replacement, we entered all that information in. We've entered in lots of data. All the reports we got from people out in the public, we've sent out online. Ask them, fill out, and we send them out mail, or say, hey, can you fill us out? Give us back a report. We put a big rush through council last two months, right?
Did it again last night.
Yeah, and we've gotten two results back in two months. So we're shutting that down, we're done with the data collection part, now it's report time. And we're making maps up, showing where areas that we need to go physically inspect, people's houses, service lines. And, and Mike is writing us a plan of action for unknown areas, that's part of the report. And when I say unknown, that means that we don't, we know what's there, so we have to write a report. If we do find a lead service line, or galvanized line, or whatever's past our system, what our plan of action is, what we're going to do. That's required from EPA. So they still haven't really set the whole guidelines in what we're going to be responsible for, service lines or not, but that'll be in our plan of action, so. Data collection part's done, we've done as much as we could. So start writing a report, then maps, got field inspection, some other areas.
So do you want us to take the lead and copper survey off the website?
Absolutely not. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that, that's fine.
I mean, if you're not going to use it?
We're not.
There's no point leaving it out.
Except two months, we've gotten two reports. Very disappointing. I thought we'd have a kind of a mad rush, people fill out the forms, do them, got returned back in, so. It's not working. Well, we're going to remove that, we're going to close our open port down for our GIS software, so.
And you're just going to start assigning districts and just go get them?
That's our mapping system.
I don't think there's any other way.
Next, next meeting, I'll present some maps, you all can show what we're talking about, where we've gotten good reports, we have inspected things, and where we need to start concentrating on.
Are you going to have to hire any temporary employees to actually give you that?
Well, we're pretty busy with this next item coming up, so we're going to hire, get some people in here and do some billing work. So, yeah, that'd be nice.
No, I mean, that's, we can get some temps in here, and we need to get this knocked down.
Yeah, hopefully we can get some people in here from college, help with a few projects I've gone on for summer, so. Inspections out in the field, I don't, we might still be doing that in June, July, but hopefully we'll be. Lead and copper. There's going to be some unknown, that's why you make the report, that's our plan of action for the service line. There's no one out there fully knows what's out in the ground. Okay, let's move along. We've had meetings once, once a month, and they're going pretty well, so. Now let's print out that and see what we got. Moving to new business, big one, meter discussions. I come to y'all back in the spring and discuss with y'all reference to what Neptune come and told us, what our current situation is, we installed these meters ten years ago, they had twenty year warranty with them. Ten years full replacement, ten years prorated. Now, what they're doing is, they're still honoring the warranty issues on the meters, but they are not supporting the data collection part of it. So happens out in the field right now, the meters, we set up thing, go to our data collectors, data collectors acquire that data, sends the numbers to our building software, and that's how we get our readings. Right now, we have about two hundred meters that are non-functional. And we can put the existing meters on there, if we can get them, but our data collectors are, if it goes down, there's no support. They go down, we lose everything, which we currently have an issue with our data collector at Millstone. I'll let Tommy talk about a little bit more of that, but what's happening is, it's non-functional. So there's upper end town, like, we can't get meter readings. Tommy? That's where we're at. Like I said, the, the data collector's no longer supported, so we, we currently have four data collectors, we've lost one, we lose another, and it just, it just kills that section of town. Data collector to base at Millstone, O V U, and Sonic Home. So lose the one at fifty, at Millstone, wife's upper end of town now. We lose one at O V U, the center part of town goes dead. Upper part of town, everything from Sixteenth Street down goes dead. So the only way to get true readings on the meters, we have, is to get them out and bubble it and read them, and that's where we're at. Some of our city at this time, there's two hundred meters that are functioning, but to get the data off of them, we have to actually go out there and bubble it. We used to...
The thing we tried to get away from then?
Yes, that's what, you know, ten years ago, we, that was the whole purpose of the project. And Corne Main and Neptune is, like I said, the meters, yeah, there's still warranty issues, but there's still warranty, but there's no way reading them. So it doesn't really do any good. So I asked them that time, discussed them, we spoke to attorneys, kind of in a bind, so I asked them, I said, okay, let's, let's look at the new system, which is a cellular based system. Each meter has a, it's a cellphone, you know, easy to understand. And it'll go, we won't need the data collector anymore, each, each meter will report back to this building. We'll get rid of the backbone system we have, been having a problem with forever, get rid of the data collectors, and just a new upgrade system. And if we do get the new system, I'm hoping you approve today, it starts a new warranty, it starts a new twenty year warranty on that. So we'll start new, but we'll have to have the guys go out and replace them. When we replace them, I'm not replacing the whole meters, what we're doing is just popping the tops off, put some new top on, box up, place them. So we should be a pretty aggressive, fast-paced replacement. This is going to take some manpower to do it.
The heads are battery driven?
They are battery driven, yes.
How long is the battery?
Well, they're, like I said, ten year full replacement, ten year prorated, so. So right now, we're getting, that's our biggest issue, ten years. That's their standard covered warranty, but the top of the meters are roughly, if you buy them brand new without, outside the warranty issue, it's roughly three hundred and ten dollars per meter, the top of it. But since they're standard warranty, they're going to cover the ten years and give us a reduced cost of one hundred and seventy-nine dollars per meter. Replace them, okay? Do it in-house. We have approximately fifty-four hundred meters. Replace the tops, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars a piece, roughly nine hundred, or nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Is that urban money?
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm going to take all of it, if there's a little left, we can do something else with it. Couple hundred thousand would be about it. But if we don't do it, we're going to go back to, we're going to have to start manual reading again, so. That's not what I want to do. So I advise this board to approve this project. But then the best we can, getting the prices down on them, we've argued with them, discussed with them, and that's the best we can get is one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So which is about half the cost of a new one. So they're still covering some of the warranty, which are all brand new warranties. So with...
So we had a conversation about, instead of going back to these meters, that we go with the meters like Parkersburg has, which you all have census, right? All right? And are yours radio reads or, I mean, are yours, you surely are still mainly reading?
There's, yeah, right here.
And they're all census meters? Okay? So if we don't go with what we have now, then it's a complete?
Full meter.
Full meter, install new meter, are the exact, are they the exact same bodies?
All meters are the same width.
Yeah, so it's not a matter of replumping, it's just a matter of disconnect the unions and put new ones in.
I wish it was that easy, yes, but that's just a yes. It never goes that easy. Yeah, that's what you do, you set nuts, need side, you break and lose, place the gas, go set new ones. Yeah, that's what you do, you set nuts, need side, you break and lose, place the gas, go set new meter in, it'll take you about four times longer than what it would displace a. And you're looking at three hundred and eighty to four twenty-five.
And what do we do about our ten year warranty?
Our main ten year warranty is they cover that, reduce price of.
They're, they're saying that they're knocking off.
Cost of the top, Peter said, or nine hundred.
Well, I'm not the smartest guy, but three ten minus one eighty is not half. How old are the meters that are replaced now?
Ten years. Ten years.
If we change to the cellular based meters, how much work on the cellular side is there required to get us back up and running?
Much work?
Yes, they have put in new.
All my, starts downloading to your system, they put a box out, starts downloading to our system.
So this box that you returned to, what is it?
This is cellular data collector.
So we're gonna, we're still gonna be stuck with data collectors?
One, it's just not ready data collectors, it goes, it's like cellphone, you call it up, goes to tire, comes back in. It's a box, it works that signal off A T and T, to, to sell your network to be with. We can, it goes to cloud base, is that right, Tommy? Cellular phone, I mean, the cellular meter goes to cloud base, then our box, which is more like it's internet, draw that data out of the cloud. That's the box system, that's just.
So, based on the reconciliation funds that was given yesterday. Yeah, December seventh, which is a few days ago a week, all right? There is approximately. Two million dollars. Sitting there between the unrestricted funds and the reserve funds, between water and sewer. How do we pay for these meters, that's nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
A R P money.
One lump sum, or do we string it out over the three months, or how do we pay for it?
Well, letter indicating they could start, we did placement work today, they, they start sending out in packets, and they have a complete packet done by the end of March, start sending out in February, beginning of February, and have everything here by the end of March. All fifty-four hundred.
Okay.
So, yeah, we could.
So we basically run a lump sum.
Run a lump sum, yeah.
So I can tell you, based on my opinion, that getting all of the A R P money out of the city council is probably never gonna happen. Okay, everybody has projects they wanna do and all that, okay, we can ask, you know, they may say, this is the end of the run, let's just do this. But on the other hand, they may not, and so I can tell you that I would feel confident that if we went and asked for half. Five hundred thousand dollars, and then we paid for the other half, which would be four hundred and fifty out of our money, that, that would probably be very, I, I think it would be well received, all right? So, I don't think there's any question, we have to replace these meters, we're gonna be, we're just working ourselves into a corner, is all we're doing, and it's coming closer and closer.
Coming quick.
Yeah, and so, if we ask for half of that money, and then we take the other half out of the money that we have, then I would say that's probably a doable thing.
Can I say this, I don't share that same opinion, because the council has been very much wanting to give the money to the utility board, because I think everybody understands. So many projects, you know, we've gotten behind on things, and of course, you know, now they know about the meter project, didn't, we couldn't foresee that was gonna happen, I mean, but it did, and we have to deal with it. So, I don't, I say, ask for the whole entire money, and, you know, if the mayor was gonna support the utility board and, and support that, what we're trying to do on council, there's not gonna be an issue. I mean, you know, you, I, you miss every shot you don't take, I mean, we all know that, I say ask for it, all of it.
Yeah, we did. But I was gonna also tell you.
I understand.
That if you want this done quickly, and you wanna make this project move forward, it takes four votes, that's the way it works, okay? Georgia council asks to support that, and I'm just telling you, that if you want this done quickly, it's a more reasonable ask, to ask for half of it, and then the, then the utility board pays the other half. Now, it's already been voted, I'll take it to them, I will.
I, I, I would hope they would see the need for the project and understand the expense of it, so, and priority of it, I mean, this is our revenue generating project. I don't think there's anything else in the city that's revenue generating, meters is it, you don't have accurate meters or meters that reach, you're not sending out bills, and that's where your revenue comes in. But if you, and I understand what you're saying, I'd, I'd hope they would understand the importance of it, uh. And approve it, if they don't, if they approve half, then we'll, we'll see what we can do, I mean, it has to be done.
Well, there's no see what we can do, you know we can do it.
Yeah.
The numbers are here.
Right, I just hope they would understand that we have millions of dollars worth of projects here coming up, and I know it shows a million dollars in water and eight hundred thousand dollars in sewer, but. I think the, the project we got lined up is gonna eat in quite a bit of that also, I mean, we can't. Yeah, that million dollars is, uh, water, it, it don't take long to eat it up, if I got emergency somewhere, so. And I did think of that council, say, hey, can you give me a million dollars out of your general revenue, because they're not gonna approve it, because it's not. Enterprise money compared to, you know, so.
I'm just trying to tell you the way it is, I'll do it, any way you want, I'll ask for the whole thing.
You're like my, did my parents thump and cry and ask, beg and get me what I want, maybe, I don't know, let's say we ask for it, and if they don't, then we'll, we'll address it.
What, and that's why I asked that you'd come before the council, when you came, and it, your presentation was very impactful, because, you know, I don't think that people are really aware of all the. Of everything that's needed, so, you just need to come back again and stress that, when we put it on the agenda, that we're gonna grab the rest of the ARPA money. And make sure you're available to answer questions, and we make that happen, like I said, if there's will from, you know, the two people here that sit on this board, they'll have the same will in council, you're not gonna have a problem.
So, on the meter discussion, we can go ahead and approve. Completing the project though, right?
How are you gonna pay for it? I mean, honestly, we can take nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the money that we have.
Yeah.
Can we do that? Absolutely.
Uh, so.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
It has to be done, it's not an option, so.
We can go back to reading manual meters.
We can, absolutely.
I mean, if you can find six guys that'll go out and walk the streets, but, okay? Yes, oh, yes.
So we're gonna improve this project, we have the money in the budget for this project, I'm just asking for the council to pay for it out of A R P money, but we have, currently have the money, so we can improve the project. Get this thing rolling, so I can get this, cause every day and every week that we wait, there's just more meters that's going down. I can't even, I mean, I made a request for rapid N P O for meters last May, I still haven't got some, so. That's why I didn't write the letter for him, and that he could get at least the tops here by March. I've been requesting twenty meters two weeks ago, and, or looked down, me, six months, and I got customers out there waiting for their, I don't even have meters. Got ninety-six meters out in Rosemont, I don't even have them. We're gonna put old meters in, and manual read those, uh, just to get the people water. I'm running all those, I'm rebuilding some of the meters that I got, bases on, just to, to water flow through and get somewhat accurate reading of them. I'm worried waiting more problems that we're gonna run into, so. So, I'd ask for you to approve that particular project. You guys, I can advise you, you gotta vote on. I can't make a motion, so. It is on. Discussion.
Yeah, it's a discussion. Um, um, where's your meeting?
Well, uh, when's the next council meeting?
I don't know.
Potentially the twenty-eighth of December.
Okay.
Let's have a meeting set.
I can't. Yeah, that, that, two days opposed to, so that'd be the gap.
He's talking about you have to have three days before you can post the agenda, if it's, if it's approved on Thursday night, it can be, the utility board could vote on it.
Yeah, if I have a question.
There's no three day wait between that.
Right.
It's what they insert you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, right, uh, I could, I just thought. Make sure they did approve it before I actually had meeting, so.
So if it's approved by council, Thursday, twenty-eighth. Friday, uh, if we can get a warrant. I don't know if anybody's going out of town or whatever, but.
All day weekend.
I know, I can be there.
I'll be here.
While voting, voting, you can be. I'll make myself available, I'm not gonna. Right.
January the fifth. Actually, that weekend maybe bad. Just see which be the best.
It may be bad, but it, it would be a really super quick meeting, other than your schedule being disrupted by having to be at a meeting at one. And I, presumably, if somebody couldn't be here physically, they could call in, and that's really easy to do, if you're out, on vacation on the road or something, just call in. So, I'd, I'd rather see it happen on the twenty-ninth, so we can move.
Yeah, I'll be here, you're welcome. I guess I get back to October twenty-eighth, I think, or.
Let's try that.
Yes, the next one is your, a bid approved financing water department, the two thousand twenty-three F five fifty pickup truck.
So last night at city council, they approved the sewer truck, or the, uh, or, or street department, okay? So, uh, sealed bids for the financing of a two thousand twenty-three Ford truck for the water department, were opened on November the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten o'clock in the morning, with the following results. United Bank, three years, five point oh five percent, uh, Country Roads leasing, three year at four point one five percent. Community Bank, three year, six point nine nine percent, and West Banco, three year, at six point two three percent. After careful review of the bid proposals, the recommendation for utility board approval from the Budget and Finance Committee for the financing of a two thousand twenty-three Ford truck. Is the low bid from Country Road Leasing in the amount of, uh, four point one five percent for three years, for a total payback, uh, on that particular truck at a hundred and six thousand dollars. Hundred and six thousand, five hundred and three dollars and twelve cents, funding for this project would come, uh, from, uh, line item eighty dash three ninety-two dash zero 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 zero. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the low bid for Country Roads leasing for three years at four point one five percent.
So moved.
So we moved and seconded that we approved the. Yeah, that we approved the Country Roads leasing, uh, for three years at four point one five percent, is there any further discussion? There is none, then I'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. You oppose, motion carries on.
That's nice, we haven't got the truck in, uh, but hopefully it should be in, it's, it's being, uh, processed through, the manufacturer makes a bid, and attachments go on, so. That, trucks have been a year out since order. Team like trucks are. Y'all have noticed they've been running a lot of ads in paper lately about trucks, in ten percent, twenty percent below sticker price now, so it's hard to get back, should be on a cost of a pickup, so if you have even more future trucks, it'll be. Low sticker, not ad sticker like we've had in paper last year. Which is very expensive, dealers love it, but I don't, I don't think, utility board does, so. Andrew Porter, I'd like to, first thing I'd like to discuss, from here on out, that the director does not cover the agenda, so. President of the board.
I've had a sore, I've got a really sore throat.
Yeah.
So since Russ wasn't here, it fell on you.
Well, when you got Russ to it, I, I don't think I should be doing it, so I'll keep my mouth shut from going out, everything else is going good, uh, I, next week, two weeks, uh, with the holidays coming in, I'm running a real low staff. Uh, cause the guys are taking off, filling out their times for remaining part of the year, so. We have enough to cover emergencies, but not really anything to do out in the field as to standard maintenance, so. Skater system, I know we're work, still working on that, uh, they're getting everything together to get up here to get this done, taken care of. That plant's working great. Everything's going pretty smoothly, uh, hopefully the projected winter is gonna be. Nicely easy, as they say, uh, no snow, so. Yeah, we don't use that, we're allowed to work, it starts with an S, uh, right here, so. Freezing, so it's really nice, so, had a lot of water breaks, usually, most of them lately has been on service lines, so that's good, not too much of shift in earth yet, around. Break our lock mains, so, been pretty blessed. Still working, Mike, on projects coming up, water line upgrades, so. Kewitt's kinda eased up on us quite a bit, so, had a rush here for a couple weeks, a lot of guys off, but now, back, outside of vacation. Haven't been good on the pay rates yet, if you guys think that, don't get outside with me, I'm still gonna fight through pay rates later on, we'll, we'll go with the budget, see where it goes.
Let's charge some jeans, man.
We will get things resolved that time, cause it's, uh, you know, I can, as a director, I can only advise you. But I see work coming, and, uh, hope you take it serious on the, on the employee issues, cause it's, it scared me to death. So I, I see a lot of guys leaving next couple of years, and we don't have any favorite places. Yeah, and we don't have the pay rate to get quality individuals in here, that's what we're gonna be. I don't want to bash anybody out there, but it, it takes a smart individual, be a water and sewer operator. Difficult test to pass them. You guys got any questions for me? Your time for your comments.
Um, my comments are very simple, okay? They are. But, before we go, you're done, right?
Yeah.
Steve? Kim? Boy? So my comments are very simple, alright? You know, utility board is one division of the city of Vienna. Police, fire, parks, the whole nine yards. Every division has needs and wants that they will fight for.
Good.
Okay? Alright? Now, city council at this time has some economic development issues that they're wanting to get movement on. Alright, we've got all these studies going. We still have a kayak launch. You know, we've got all these things that are in the, in the mix. And so, I understand it's your job to stand there and say, hey, this is something that has to happen. And it is. But I can also tell you that practical side of it is, there are only so many dollars in the pot. And every division gets a share of that. Okay? Now. Alright? Street department gets a huge chunk of that.
Worth it.
Not arguing. We got lots of streets, okay? Not arguing. Alright, all I'm telling you is you can only stretch the balloon so far before it breaks.
I agree, and.
Alright? And unfortunately, infrastructure is expensive and it never goes away. And if you don't keep up on it and do some of it all the time, you're never gonna get ahead. So, I don't share Kim's enthusiasm, because I know the reality of it. Okay? The economic development things that are out there are very, very well supported. Because you have to make a town that attracts new people to come and younger people to stay. Alright? And unfortunately, you know as well as we all do, water and sewer kind of just, you know, turn the fossil on, the water comes, we're good. I mean, they forget about that. They do. Alright? So I'm telling you, from my side of the thing, okay? I guarantee if we split this thing and we go ask for part of that to do the meters, it'll be, it'll be approved right now. If you wanna go in there and you wanna gut that account and take all the money that's left, well, we'll see where it ends up.
Well, I, you know, always ask for everything and see what you get. I, I will say a few things about your comments about every department. There's one great thing about city Vienna. I've been there for twenty-six years, and we've always done this, is every department, fire, police, parks, public works, have always worked very well with each other. And we know it's a give and take system. When the fire department needs a new truck, I know public works don't get a new truck that year, okay? Because they have their needs, and it's a very important need. When the police department needs new cruisers, I understand. Fire department won't get a new truck that year, or a new piece of equipment. And it comes time with the, when public works needs a piece of equipment, I think the elders understand that, hey, public works needs equipment, we're not gonna get new cruisers or new fire truck. So it's a, it's a give and take system, and I think we do a great job, and I like every department that's there. But I still gotta ask, okay? And I still gotta ask for everything I can get, uh, because we're worth it. And I got told time and time again, we're the only department that sells a product six year term out, okay, so.
Well, hey, the good news is that the economic development stuff that they're talking about is less than a hundred thousand dollars. And the thing to focus on is this ARPA money? If you take it away from water and sewer, it gets paid by the rate payer. That's a whole different kettle of fish. And yes, while every department needs something, there's no denying that. Where you're trying to do it this way, so that the residents and businesses of Vienna pay less for their water and sewer, because there's a rate increase coming. So that's the argument. I mean, yeah, there are a bunch of other stuff, but, you know, and I'm all for economic development, but as that stands, it's less than a hundred thousand dollars to jumpstart what's being looked at there.
I know that, you know, as a budget, you look at the numbers, where we got twelve million dollars in, in, in the kitty and general fund, is that correct?
Thirteen.
Thirteen million dollars, I mean, in that kitty, so. Let, let that fund be used for some things that needs to be, to the fire department. Or economic development, I think is a great thing, because that's, that's, again, that's the revenue base, okay? If you get that, it brings in more revenue, which, which we all need. I'm not digging it whatsoever.
Steve, we need you to start building the houses again. Three or four. Okay, we're that short on houses.
Absolutely.
Find it, and also find some land in Vienna to do it at.
Yeah.
Because we're also so tightly densely populated. You read that comprehensive plan, it really underscores that too, like, not that you needed to know, to read a plan to know that. We all know that. Vienna's one of the most densely populated cities in all of Western Virginia.
People are used, used to have hundred foot lots, tearing houses down, make two fifty foot lots and build two new houses. It's, it's crazy in Vienna.
And you'll sell for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a piece. Yep. Gee, man. I like that. Oh, boy.
Cash in the check.
Which is tax basis good on that.
But I do agree with Greg on that. If there's things the council wishes to do, we have that kind of fun.
Exactly. The enterprise fund is restrictive, right? You, you can't just go out, like, we can't say, hey, give us money out of your capital reserves for the enterprise fund. It doesn't work that way. So that's, that's what makes the situation complicated. So how you leverage what you're gonna do makes a huge difference. And we lose out by not being thoughtful about it. And, well, he loses out, once again, I was gonna say it over and over again, is the rate payer. You know? It's gonna be bad enough.
Yeah.
We'll work through it there.
All we can do is ask. Beg. Plead, yeah.
Anything else? Mike, and we didn't ask you. Anything for you? Oh, Merry Christmas. We'll see you the twentieth, alright?
Yeah, we'll see you. You see this?
You know, we, we, you know, meet with the bridge people today. We have a massive amount of projects coming up the next five years. Waters, sewer, bridges, streets. I mean, it's, it is a huge.
Someone has done a good job.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay? There's some you don't even know about yet that you're gonna be thrilled, okay?
I, I like them kind of things, too.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna be stunned. Okay?
Need more work for me?
No? Well, yeah, but no.
I mean, really, we've been, this city's been blessed with what's coming up and what's happened in the past, so this, you know, water and sewer department has been kinda unthought of, because you said, unfortunately, when you do things well and everything works well, nobody cares about you. It doesn't come to light until something starts happening bad, and, and we have to look so far ahead, try to prevent that from happening, but yet, it's hard to tell people, hey, this is gonna happen. They're gonna, they look at you, what's happened, happened last ten years, so why are you worried about it? Exactly. It hasn't happened the last ten years, so it's coming. And it's, it's gonna happen in water and sewer, so. And stormwater, and streets. Employees. Big change in employees. Tally of employees.
How many of you do you have?
I know you've lost a few individuals, because, oh, the plants and things, or certifications, oh. It's gonna happen.
Wait till Ravenswood kicks out.
No.
Wait.
Yeah, a lot of plants, a lot of factories back productions. I mean, it's good paying jobs.
Oh, my.
Public works is not one of thankless job. We don't get on TV all the time.
I'm done.
Yeah, we're just talking.
We're done.
Yeah.
Where's this piece of paper at?
Hey. If you hit this on the agenda for the. Mine. I will. I'll get an email.
Yeah, tenth, we can just do it that month, if you wanted.
See what happens. We're waiting on the answer back from the Department of Highway.